I'd like to call the meeting to order. Mr. Pernow, could you do the roll call?
Reverend Childs.
Here.
Ms. Collins.
Here.
Uh, Dr. Jacobowitz.
Here.
Ms. Jordan.
Here.
Ms. Lau.
Here.
Mr. Michael.
Here.
Mr. Shaughnessy.
Here.
Mr. Shear's at. Mr. Spicer.
Here.
Could you please stand for the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of a collection bargaining under the Taylor-Hoof KTF ESP, CSMA, and ASPA. Matters pertaining to the employment of particular individuals and employment history of particular individuals or corporations.
I'll move.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. We'll be adjourning to executive session and returning as close to seven as possible. Thank you. I'd like to call the meeting to public session. I'd like to call the public session to order. We have one resolution coming out of executive session. Resolution 2018 BoE 55, whereas the negotiating teams to the district and the Kingston Federation of Substitute Teachers executed a memorandum of agreement on March 1st to May 19th calling for the creation of a four-year successor collectively negotiated agreement to the one that expired on June 30th, 2018, and whereas the legislative approval is required by the Board of Education in order to implement the funding of said agreement. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board hereby ratifies the memorandum of agreement between the district and Kingston Federation of Substitute Teachers covering the period from July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2022, and authorizes the funding of each one as necessary to implement the provisions of the 2018-2022 collectively negotiated agreement. A copy of the memorandum of agreement shall be incorporated by the reference within the minutes of this meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, this is the first opportunity for public participation. You have two minutes. The Board Clerk will let you know when you're approaching your two minutes. Anyone sign up or would like to speak at this time? Okay, everybody wants to get up at once? I'll move to the approval of the minutes of February 6th, 2019. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move.
Second. Any amendments or corrections for the minutes of February 6th? All those in favor of the minutes of February 6th signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll move for the approval of the minutes for February 21st. I'll entertain a motion for the minutes, approval of the minutes of February 21st.
So moved.
Sure. Basically stay there. The agenda says minutes of February 21st, but the meeting was actually the 20th?
The minutes of February 21st. No, they, we had them on Thursday. So there's no corrections or amendments to the minutes of February 21st? All those in favor of the minutes of... All those in favor of the minutes of February 21st signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? I will now turn the meeting over to Dr. Catalino.
Thank you, Ms. Lau. Okay, we have a couple of things here on our superintendent's report, and first, we'd like to welcome our new principal at Crosby Elementary School for the Principal's Report, Kathleen Sickles.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, and I just wanted to start it out, thank you, by saying how honored I am to be part of the Crosby community. I met with every faculty member and staff member over the summer or in the beginning of the school year, and I wanted to let them know a couple of things about me, and I wanted to know a couple of things about them. And the things that we focused on were making sure that they knew that I was there to support them in big and small things, that they would be heard, that they would be valued, and that they would be supported as well. And in turn, the students would be heard and valued and supported, so, because that's why we're here, and that's the core of the work that I did. So it was important for me to let them know that it's a two-way street and that I would be there, right with them along the way. So I am a cheerleader by definition. It's how I am, it's how I've always been. I always try to take a negative and turn it into a positive. So that's how I lead. So with that, I wanted to go over, go through some of the goals that I've had as a new administrator at Crosby. Relationships are the foundation of every piece of success that our school has. So I worked hard and continue to work hard on building relationships with all stakeholders, students, families, faculty, and the community as well. I've been working hard to learn about the traditions that are happening at Crosby and to be part of the fabric of the school. My most important piece, to be visible, to be present, to be approachable, so that anyone, any stakeholder, can come to me with their problems and their solutions. And then to listen to the needs of the building and to make a plan based on that. So my first steps were to look at the data, look at the attendance, look at who our kids are, who our teachers are, and then make a plan from there. And the whole time, always keeping a laser focus on my set goals. They're listed in my office, they're part of conversations that I have with teachers every day, data meetings, anytime, we're always working toward our set goals. And then something that is a goal that I'm working on now is an attendance process in my building. We have a good one, but I'm looking to improve it. So let's start with some, I have a few of the set goals that I wanted to go over with Sixty percent of kids in K through 1 will increase by three reading levels by June 2019. That's our goal. Sixty percent in grades 2, 3, and 4 will increase by two reading levels by June, that's our goal. So how are we doing with that? So I've been working closely with Dr. Alaveto, she's been wonderful in helping me to extract data and teaching me how to extract data using all of the different platforms that we use here at Kingston. So she's been wonderful, so I thank you for all of your support. So currently, with our last round of testing, students in K1, thirteen percent of already reached that goal, the one that's destined for the end of the year. Thirty-six percent have increased two reading levels, so they just have to increase one more level and they will have met that goal. Typically, with kids in kindergarten to first grade, they're working on letter identification and sound, and letter sounds. So the growth doesn't typically happen until this point of the year moving forward. So I'm confident that those numbers will go up. For grades 2, 3, and 4, increasing by two reading levels, thirty-three percent have already reached that goal, so are already halfway there. Forty-one percent have increased by one reading level, so I'm confident that we'll also make that goal. So what's next? How are we going to support that? How are we going to move forward and how are we going to build our ELA program? Because that's something that we, as a school, have been struggling with. So we're about to embark an exciting book study that doesn't really work with just themes or anything like that. What I'm working on is a book that has concrete strategies that have been research-based that have worked. And what we're going to do, we're going to work with teachers, they're going to go out, try the strategies, we're going to come back, and we're going to talk about it. What worked, what didn't work, what are we going to tweak, what are we going to keep, and then we're going to teach each other. So we have a lot of great staff, so why not give them the capacity to teach each other? In the meantime, working and having those vertical conversations. Not having pockets of grade 2 talking to each other, grade 1 talking to each other, but have K1, 2, 3, and 4 talking to each other. Give them a focus. Talk about theme, talk about mentor texts, whatever the focus is, we'll have them talk to each other. Talk about best practices, talk about continuity in our instruction. Has to happen. We're going to continue the work that Marie Anderson began, using explicit direct instruction. It's alive and well in every classroom. It has really served our students with disabilities well, and we're hoping to continue that work along the way. And of course, continuing our data-driven instruction. I was in a training in this room all day today, learning how to use one of the platforms that we are using to measure students, and it does drive everything we do. All decisions are based on how to do the work. So another set goal is something that we're working hard at Crosby to increase our parent participation. It's a struggle, and we're working toward making improvements in that. So how, what are we doing? Typical elementary school events, we have open house, drama, back-to-school, parent night, literacy celebration, which is happening this week, field day moving up. The data performances is something that's unique to Crosby, so it's something that we celebrate and that it gives students who may not be academically strong, gives them a place to shine. In addition to that, since September, I started a Facebook page to highlight the wonderful things that are happening at Crosby, to be a cheerleader to parents. Parents love to see what's going on in the classrooms. They love to see their kids' pictures, they like to see their kids engaged in work. We show pictures of the building, pictures of completed work. It's an opportunity for us to market Crosby and what it's all about. Two-hundred-and-sixty-five likes in September, thank you very much. The other way we do that is through the Crosby Times. We, I write a newsletter to parents every month. In addition to that, information, the calendar, the menu, anything from PTO, the nurse, all goes home in a booklet style and is printed and sent home. My goal for next year is to go all electronic, be more green, it'll take less manpower to produce this, the same piece of information. I'm hoping to put it on the website and print less in offer to those who don't have access to Internet, which we can still provide the information. I also want to begin to use the Blackboard app, so I can talk with parents in real time. All in effort to get more participation. The other set goal that we're working very hard on is the ten percent decrease in students in grades 3 and 4 who identify bullying as an issue or as a problem. How are we doing? This is a poster that I had brought to the district that I've given and provided copies to all of the principals in the district, and it's something that I have had a lot of success with in the past. What it provides is an opportunity for conversation. When kids have a conflict, we can go to the poster, let's talk about what it is, let's talk about what's happening. Because what we need to do is educate kids on what bullying is and what it isn't. And that, I think the word is used more than it needs to be. If it's bullying, we'll deal with it a hundred percent. It's something that is not tolerated, it's thoroughly investigated. But many times, it's just somebody being rude, or it's somebody being mean. So if we can point to it and say, "Were they mean?" Yeah, they were. Were they bullying? Hmm, probably not. So at least we can understand what it is that's happening and then address it appropriately. So this is, I think other principals are using it in the district. This is hanging in every classroom and every bus that Crosby kids use, and it's in every common area. So anywhere any adult is, we walk them to the poster and point to it, talk about it. It's also gone home to parents. So it's a work in progress, continue to educate, and hopefully that ten percent decrease will show itself. The other piece of the social-emotional, this is the attendance piece that I'm working to improve. Working on a tiered approach right now, we have calls, our social worker and our nurse do a great job in communicating with parents and families for attendance issues, so I want to be a bigger piece of that possible. I want to be more proactive. I do send letters home, I do make those phone calls, I do meet with parents, and we do provide supports for struggling families that are having trouble either with communication or rides or that type of thing. So we're working closely on that. And then at the beginning of the school year, when I talk to all of the staff, when I talked about support, I asked them, "Well, what do you need from me?" And they overwhelmingly asked for professional development in these two areas. So we did do both of those, helping students living with trauma, kids that come in who have a rough time at home, how do we help them so that they'll sit down and do their type of facts? Because when they're worried about what's going on at home, they don't want to do their type of facts. So how can we help them? To help them to grow in school and how can we help them emotionally? So we did have the BOSI behavior team come in. They were wonderful, there was a lot of great ideas, strategies to help kids, and we are applying them every day. The other piece was de-escalation. If a kid is having troubles, how do we help them to calm them down? Or how do we catch it before it gets to a point where they are really struggling? So we're learning how to find those triggers so that those things don't continue to happen and that they can settle in and get to the work that we need to have them do. So this is where I feel like music should be playing. So at Crosby, we're building a culture of safety and high expectations, and where we celebrate kids and their learning, we want to celebrate all kids, not the ones that are super smart. We want to celebrate the ones that are having those small pieces of growth, we want to celebrate any bits of growth that we can get, so that we can build the confidence and build upon them. So this week, we're celebrating literacy at Crosby. It's been going on all week, and I want to officially invite all of you. If you're available at any point on Friday, we have a gallery walk type of exhibit happening. Each classroom is going to have student work displayed, where you can come in, take a look at it, understand, appreciate, and celebrate all of the hard work that the kids are doing. And especially at 2:30, we're doing a musical flash mob as a school to celebrate. So that'll be fun if you're interested in coming to see any of those. Come at any point Friday, we'll have parents, there's a lot of families coming in, it'll be a good opportunity to see, for you to see exactly what Crosby's all about. And that's it. Any questions for me? Yes?
Well, I don't really have a question as an observation. I really appreciate the fact that you seem to be coming at, coming to Crosby and, first of all, respecting the history. I love the fact that you were trying to understand what their traditions were rather than just change everything. And I also appreciate your growth kind of pattern that you're looking for and the fact that you're very sensitive to what all the needs are. I think that you're a wonderful addition to Kingston. Really happy to be here.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Dr. Jacobowitz?
I'll second what Ms. Jordan just said, and it's nice to meet you. I've heard a lot about you, so it's nice to see your face. So I have a question about the trauma, professional development of trauma. I know a lot of our schools are engaging with that BOSI's program, I hear a lot about it, but I'd like to know a little bit more, you know, what is it and what's the substance and what? So what kind of, what kinds of strategies and what are people, what are your teachers learning?
Well, the PD that we had come into our building was an extension of what the district had already provided during grade level meetings. What the teachers were looking for was how to tap into how kids are feeling. So it's something that teachers were already doing, and what it did do was validate the work that's already happening. And that is, when kids come in, you kind of take their temperature as far as, "How are we feeling today?" And then we know if we have work to do or whether we can begin our day. So it would start with a, it could start with a morning meeting, and you go around and you ask just a probing question of everyone, and you can get a sense of how things are going. Kids will tell you if something's not going on, if something's going on at home that they're not feeling good about. Or you get to know them well enough where you can sense, "Hmm, maybe I need to pull that child aside and have a conversation. How can I help? Is there something happening that I can help you with?" So it was more two parts. One, validating what they already do, and two, for those who weren't doing that, now they are, so that we can start our day in a way that we can understand where the kids are and we can meet them.
So teachers are really adapting at the beginning of their day.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's at the very beginning, when they get off the bus, we have our social worker and our psychologist in the hallway, checking the temperature of the kids who frequently have troubles when they get off the bus, checking them as they come in. "How are we doing? We good?" And then if they're not, we pull them aside, see what we can do to stabilize, and then we get them in the classroom as soon as we can.
Just to add to that, as a district, the administrative team went through the trauma, informed, trauma-informed education training a couple of months ago, a month ago. And we will be, now we're expanding that, and we're going to move that out even further than just the BOSI's team that kind of comes in and helps quickly into a district-wide initiative to help all of our administrators and our teachers, you know, know how to better work with students who've come to our schools with, you know, with the trauma.
Ms. Sickles, I just wanted to say all the programs and instructional goals you just presented just made me miss terribly, being an elementary school principal, I just retired, and I will be there Friday. I don't know if I'm, I don't know if I'll have all the steps to the, to the dance, but I'll try.
We'll hook you right up.
Thank you.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
I guess I'm bored now. Thank you for the question.
Anyone else?
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, everyone.
Okay, next we have our friends from BBL. No Tom Popper tonight, he's away, but I think Carter can handle it.
Some quick updates on the hire, since Tom Popper is unable to make it tonight. The windows are now complete on the first and second floors, minus this one window that you can see in front of the dumpster, they're using that to load and unload materials from the first floor. The windows look great on the inside of the building, they're working on window trim, I have a picture of that as well. Starting to put up ceilings on the second floor, it's really starting to take shape in the 1874, in the northern half of the building. Putting up ceiling grids, setting up light fixtures, setting fire, smoke detectors, those sort of devices. Painting doors, door frames as well. The lights, they're putting these in, they have them on, they turned them on today in the northern half, and then they're going to be turning on the other half of the second floor. Hopefully later next week, they'll turn on a portion of it. The lights are working. Putting up their wire. They already have the wire in place, they just have to do the final connection once they put the pictures into the ceiling grid itself. The window trim, they're painting them up to the ceiling grids, since you guys won't be able to see up above, that's why you only see half of it on this picture on the left. In the conference room on the second floor, they did floor leveling, all the taping is done, painting. Next week, they're going to come in and do ceramic tile on the other side of the hallway in the bathroom areas, ceramic tile on the second floor and the first floor they'll be doing at the same time. The tax office, the windows are completely framed, I think when I showed you last week or two weeks ago, we didn't have all the sheetrock in place, and now they're taped. They're going to be getting ready to paint soon in these rooms as well. And then they'll be coming in next week before the ceramic tile on the opposite side of this room and be doing the floor leveling. They'll do those two rooms at the same time. Wow, that was really quick. I'm sorry for that. This is a great, I mean, question.
Mr. Shaughnessy?
I think I have three questions. I just, the last picture that showed that door, are we using some of the old doors?
Some of the, the same doors are remaining, yep.
That's great. Prejudice, are we using fluorescent lighting or LED lighting?
They're LED lights.
The third question is the facade, is that going to get cleaned up?
We do, we are not repairing any of the brick. That was an alternate that was originally, the contractor fit on it, but that alternate wasn't accepted due to cost. Anybody else?
Any other questions?
Statements?
Do you have a tour coming up?
Yes, Wednesday.
Thank you, it's probably.
So I have a question, window, what kind of window coverings inside?
Yep, I believe they're just pulled out and shaved. I don't know if they look like that or more like the high school where they're a little secret or safe and let some light through.
I did go on a tour last...
This was last week.
Yeah, last Tuesday. It's starting to take shape. I still can't figure out why it was the second time, second building, the deputy superintendent between, who has a better office than the superintendent, that's something to deal with.
Well, he means a lot about it.
He's got a lot more windows than I do. So yeah, it looks great.
I did hear that.
We can switch.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you, I'll see you all next week.
Okay, last gun superintendent board is... And Mr. Olson's back. Okay, as you know, it's budget season. It's always budget season really, but this is the time to start talking a little more about budget season. Before we do anything else, I do want to make sure everyone knows that next Wednesday night at 6 o'clock here in this room, we will have our first budget forum, so welcome public to come out and participate. We'd love to hear from people about our budget and at least be able to communicate what's going on this year so far, and maybe some community members can help us to advocate for things that may be here in Kingston Safe School District. Okay, just wanted to start off to let you kind of know where are our revenues, where are our expenditures, and where are we at this point in the process? So we look at where we are as far as our revenues are concerned. Here's our proposed budget for 2019-2020, this year's budget, next year's budget, our changes from year to year. Total revenues at this point, we're assuming are going to be about seventy-three, which is about seventy-three and a half million dollars, up about four percent. See, you look where the drivers of those are, obviously those are here over in the percentages. So we're seeing a modest increase in our revenues outside of taxes, outside of tax levy. So you'll see here again, our, the big one that we always like to talk about right here is your state sources, and while that says 3.63 is our increase, that is our total increase, that's including our expenditure, our expense-based aid, so things that we spend money on and get money back for. That's not talking about our foundation aid, and that's really the money that is free to do for us to either spend on increasing costs, increasing costs for other programs, which does not much of that in this budget. So this is what we're looking at for our appropriations, what are we spending? Here we go, let this year's budget, eighteen nineteen, next year's budget, again, we'll increase, we're spending about forty, almost four percent. And where are our drivers in this area? I mean, some pretty clear drivers here. When you, when you look at a biggest driver, there it is, it's our programs for students with disabilities, and this is, this is a trend every year, a little higher this year than usual. Again, we're finding students with more needs, more intense needs, and finding other ways to work with them, sometimes includes other programs that we don't have here in Kingston School District, sometimes, you know, includes intensive work here in Kingston intensive work here in Kingston School District that drives that cost up, um, so we are, we are looking at a significant, I mean, you can see a significant increase in our, in our special education, our students with disabilities departments. So they're really, you know, we're looking at that 4% change, special ed, you know, really drives, really drives things home, small, small increases everywhere else, really within, within what we thought was reason. Some hard rawly assumptions of the budget, uh, again, retirement system rates, retirement system, uh, the teacher salaries, you know, there's the eight and a half percent there or almost nine percent there, um, the retirement as far as the employee salaries, those kind of things are, are driving our budget, health insurance rates, we're, we're hoping to hear some more about health insurance rates in the next few days, but obviously that's one of our biggest concerns, our largest, our largest expenditure within our budget is salaries and benefits, so that, that is an important number for us to have and I think we'll have it within a few days, we've kind of got some early information on what we think the de-hid rate might be, um, but we need to get that confirmed and then plug it into our calculations. Debt service on Second Century, again, this, this is going to be over the next, you know, a lot of time over, as we talk about budget, the debt service on the Second Century project is going to be one of the things we, we talk about with our budget. Government's proposal on state aid, okay, so we know what that is right now, not a whole heck of a lot as far as our foundation aid, a little under $800,000 that we're seeing there, um, you know, most of the time I would say, when the assembly and the, uh, you know, simply in the senate get a hold of it, that will go up, um, but very strategically we learned right around this time that there is a significant, um, deficit in the collection of taxes in the state of New York that may influence the people and how they work, uh, budget, and we'll know more about that in April, um, hopefully they'll figure it out and put some more money in towards education, but we'll have to save. Building aid on Second Century Project, start rolling in, so we have, we're getting early aid on the K. Wall and Fieldhouse, now we're done with the K. Wall and Fieldhouse, so the early aid's starting to roll in for us, we're not waiting, um, or wait on the line like we thought we would. And we are appropriating fund balance this year, so we're putting about $2 million into the fund balance to offset the tax levy so we can make sure that we keep the tax levy low and clean our expenses. So here's, again, rising costs, we've kind of looked at those before as far as our drivers, right, BOSI's a big increase in rising costs, obviously, um, you know, that's, that's where a lot of our students with disabilities programs come, come into play here, it's 2.2, we spent a lot of money sending our students to specialized programs and we can't do things for them here, the others, you know, your administrative, your capital is an increase from years, from years in the past, but that's a different way budget, uh, BOSI's is budgeting, um, and will even out kind of for us in the end. TRS and ERS, those are some interesting numbers because they're going down, so that's nice, debt service is going down, but that's going to fluctuate with how we work with, uh, with our financing of the building project. Transportation, increase of about $400,000, these are our estimates on health insurance and salary expense, and that's still, we have a couple of contracts that are still out there to negotiate, so we'll see where that really lands, but that's probably a reasonable, uh, number to look at, realistic number to look at as moving forward. I won't go through the whole calculation of the tax levy limit, you all know what the tax levy limit, uh, how it, what it looks like, and it's a calculation that's different for us, it's not a tax cap of 2%, it's a tax levy limit, it's this calculation, it's different for every district, it's different every year, it's almost never 2%. You'll remember last year was 3.6%, and the year before it was 1.35%, this year it's 1.45%. So, um, you know, that's a low tax levy limit, so when we add that to revenue stream that is state, that's not coming up very fast and a low tax levy limit really puts a little bit of a, a damper on our ability to continue programs as is. This is the famous sheet that Mr. Olson and his team put together that you see every year for the tax levy impact, moral of the story, our appropriations for next year, for our proposed appropriations, our, our estimated revenues, here's our tax levy, that's a 3.98 tax levy here. When we go to, so we go to our max, we have 1.5, 1.6, and there's our deficit, so a 1.45 tax levy limit, we have a deficit right now under the, over the cap, really about 2, 2.6 million dollars. On March 6th, um, we are working hard to find what we can do differently, where we can find efficiencies, hopefully, hoping for some more revenue and different ways of doing things so we can make up that gap. A little bit of struggle, but we're, we've been in similar situations before, but this is a little deeper than we, what we had expected. Questions?
Do you expect the legislative budget to be done by April 1st?
Yes. I was very surprised that it was not.
Any indication of increase over the governor's budget?
There has been very little talk about it.
I mean, at our also having school boards association meeting, there was, there was a lot of talk about how the, you know, that's a floor, so I'm hoping it is a floor and that they can make up more of that.
Yeah, I mean, you know, it's a floor, they'll, you are senators and the Senate will say it's a floor, I'm glad to hear them saying that, um, I think that was, a lot of that was before the, the conversation about the uncollected taxes and the problem states thing, and I think the other thing is, even with, even with, we'd have to have significantly more coming from the state to cut this, to cut this gap.
Go ahead. So where, so you said, you know, looking for efficiencies and can you just kind of give us a ballpark of where those areas are that you think we can find some of those?
Well, you know, I think, number, if we have to make any cuts, our cuts are always, our first will be always as far away from classroom as possible, so that's where we're going to start. Right now, we're looking at, you know, kind of it's a line-by-line thing, looking at where's, you know, where are places last year that we budgeted impact, but we only spent, why, can we drop that, can we drop that in the role of the budget, then we total that all and say, okay, what did that save us? Now, with the new health insurance numbers, which we assume we'll have the ability to use within the calculations in the next few days, will probably help us not, you know, mess around with this a little bit. One of the things that we're asking the board doing this budget also, um, is to go back to look at the, um, when we, the income that we have received from sale of this property, from the sale of this new property, from, from rents at Soapy Finn, those kind of things, we are looking at taking to allocate some money into the tax levy, right, so we have, let's just, let's use this building for example, we have $3.7 million here, so this is the taxpayer's property, that's the taxpayer's money, we would like to, to give that back to the taxpayers and in the form of a tax levy reduction, tax reduction over a 10-year period. Not that we wouldn't want to give it all at once, does that sound nice, we could do a lot of things there, but then we have a huge cliff next year that we have to make up. We moved over 10 years, it has a smoothing effect, the money goes back, but we also don't have to worry about a huge, you know, cliff that we're going to pull off because of that inflated, um, number that's in there. Does that make sense? Does that make sense?
Yes, I hope we're also looking at tightening up, I mean, transportation is going up, like, I just, you know, I, I know there are transporters who do a great job, but I'm, you know, hopefully we're kind of looking at them.
Well, we're a lot of, as far as the transportation, we're, we're kind of, you know, a lot of diversity bids, you know, we get the bids that we get and we take the lowest bids that we have and they run, they run, and we actually are very, I'd say, you know, a couple of years ago, we did a study on the transportation and it also can be, we're the most efficient, we get the most out of our transportation dollar of everyone, so we do a good job with it, um, but it goes up, you have to, there's, there's just natural increases and those kind of things. Uh, you know, one of the things we need to continue to look at is our, is our students with disabilities and the budget and the money spent around that, um, not that we'd make sure that we're spending the money where it needs to be spent, we're spending it efficiently, not, not spending it on students who need that help, but finding ways to do it that are, you know, more efficient. That's struggle. From Charlie.
I think the money that we got for this building was going in to pay for the H.A.R.
No, that, we already have the money to pay for the H.A.R., we've, you, we've, we've filled our capital reserves already, so we can't put any more money in them, so we have this money sitting here and we do, we think that would be an appropriate thing to do, moving forward, you know, give that money back as far, and, and again, decrease that, that, that bottom number that I showed you by a little bit each year, so that they will love us.
Mrs. Collins.
I'm just wondering, when we're talking about the students with special needs and we know that that's an expense and it's increasing, would that include the ELL population as well?
No.
All right, I'm just, I'm seeing, you know, it's somewhat related, but I, we've talked about the increase and recently I've seen about this influx in our community of people from Guatemala, I was wondering if that's affecting our schools and that might be something we have to look towards for next year.
Yes, definitely, there's definitely resources that we have to bring, you know, to the table to, to make sure that we serve, you know, our new Latino population, um, we've done, we've been doing that and then you'll be, um, given the new proposals from the teaching community of what we need to put together, again, we, we need to look and see how can we, um, how can we shuffle, you know, it's, the pie's on the pot, you've got to figure out a cut of it.
So it did, it will have a budgetary impact?
Yeah, of course. Sure, yeah, no doubt. I mean, last year we did a good job with the budget, we ended up being able to hire two site features, some of these, some, you know, ELL people, uh, this year, we're going to have to get creative, but we need to do more.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jordan.
When you talk about giving the money back over 10 years, will that have any impact on what the tax cap formulation will be in every year following that, because isn't it based on, I mean, I know it's a very convoluted, complex formulation, but can we do it in a way where it doesn't then drive our caps lower each year? Do you know what I mean? Am I crazy?
I'm, 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 I'm.
Oh, wonderful, thank you. And the other question I have is, are there any programs that we're currently, um, sending to BOSI's that might be able to be brought back to the district at a cost benefit?
We've done the analysis of that, Mr. Olson has done the analysis of that, and we don't feel that we really achieve a significant savings in these areas, and sometimes you have things that are clustered together, you could do that, um, this isn't the case right now, so we're, we're, we did, a couple of programs, we did look at to see if they would pull the, well, let's bring them, let's have this here, um, but the amount of dollars didn't really add up.
Any other questions for the superintendent? Thank you.
Just to, just to sum up in the idea of it, I don't want to, um, you know, this is what my seventh budget ever, and I, you know, I'm not, I'm not a sky is falling kind of person, so if the sky isn't falling, you know, we're early in the process, we're still working on it, I mean, it is, it's, this is a tough budget here, I'm not going to say that it's not, but we're not in panic mode at this point, we're working on figuring it out, in a couple of weeks, we still haven't figured things out, then we'll talk about the sky. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to the consent agenda, are there any resolutions, any trustee would like removed from the consent, consent agenda? Hearing now, make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Someone.
Any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Jordan.
I just want to disclose that I have a cousin whose bid is being accepted tonight, but I get no payback.
Thank you, any other discussion?
Mrs. Collins. Mrs. Garner is here, I believe she's the one who's taking, leading the trip, you're approving, so, um, I just want to say thank you for doing that for our students, it seems really exciting.
Did you need chaperones?
There's probably 11.
All those in favor of accepting the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstain. Mr. Spicer, would you read the donations, please?
Yes. Last, uh, last board meeting of practice, I think I have this. Accept the grant awarded for Kingston High School, whereas the Kingston High School is the recipient of a generous grant award from the community foundations of the Hudson Valley in the amount of $1,150. So I'm just going to read them all and then we'll agree to accept them all.
We are worried that we have.
Oh, okay, then here we go. Accept a grant award for Kingston High School, whereas the Kingston High School is the recipient of a generous grant award from the community foundations of the Hudson Valley in the amount of $1,273. Accept a grant award for Edward R. Crosby Elementary School, whereas the Edward R. Crosby Elementary School is the recipient of a generous grant award from the community foundation of Hudson Valley in the amount of $600. Accept a donation for George Washington Elementary School, whereas Ms. Kathy Proleman wishes to donate one color-coded Sound Game CD and one basic reading skill CD to George Washington Elementary School. Accept a grant award for Kingston High School, whereas the Kingston High School is the recipient of a generous grant award from the community foundation of Hudson Valley in the amount of $1,407.25. And lastly, accept the grant award for J.W. Bailey Middle School, whereas the J.W. Bailey Middle School is the recipient of a generous grant award from the community foundations of the Hudson Valley in the amount of $985. Now there.
Thank you, Mr. Spicer. Okay, we're going next to committee reports, audit and finance, Mr. Michaels, would you like to report?
Yes, the committee met, uh, on February 26th, where, where the committee accepted the fund reports and, uh... Second? Okay, well, the committee accepted the funding post and the, and the treasurer's report and would like to move them, make motion to move both together as one resolution.
Someone. Second.
Any discussions?
Well, someone like Delar, uh, we have a brief discussion about the contracts of the state, at this stadium, we are almost complete, hopefully we have a resolution at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Michaels. Our next committee meeting, uh, report is on policy, Mrs. Collins.
I'll give you the sheet of the book.
I'm sorry, okay. I make a motion, we accept the report on audit finance.
So we, we already got a first and a second, we just need to vote on BOE 52, 53, the treasurer and claims report.
Would you, someone in favor?
All in favor of BOE 52 and BOE 53?
Aye.
I need a few more ayes. Aye, any, anybody opposed? Any objections, sorry? Now, we have the policy committee, Mrs. Collins, would you like to report or Mrs. Jordan?
No, Mrs. Collins is still, still queen. Thank you. Uh, the policy committee met on Friday, March 1st, had a lively discussion of a few issues, um, first off, we discussed our wellness policy that's being reviewed, uh, there's some ongoing work there, Mrs. Jordan is actually our liaison working on that, um, most importantly, we're working to incorporate some language on mental health, an important aspect of wellness. We also had a discussion on athletic mergers, our direct, athletic director, Mr. Silverstein, joined us, we currently do not have a policy, we look to NISVA for their policy, they do not have a sample policy either. They do not have a sample policy either. So A.D. Silverstein agreed to work on a draft policy in conjunction with Ms. May, our attorney. And most importantly, I think we had also said that deadlines need to be established, clear deadlines, for somebody who wishes to merge or join one of our athletic teams. And really what we're looking at there are for schools that do not currently field a specific team because people have approached us, students in our area have approached us. So that needs to be worked into policy. And then thirdly, we reviewed a policy which is called the use of surveillance cameras in the district. That's policy 5325. Mr. Olson had requested that we look specifically at that. And we did vet that with our attorneys. We have it on the agenda for our first reading tonight. Not much of a change to the language. Really, it's broadening some of the terminology in terms of use of video surveillance cameras of school district properties, because you know, we do own other properties, deed stadium, et cetera. And the language that has changed, this is included on our agenda, is in bold. It also says, "In addition, the superintendent or designee may authorize administrators or security monitors to view live video streaming in order to monitor public areas such as hallways, cafeterias, playgrounds, and other outdoor areas from remote locations for the safety and security of students and building occupants." So these are public areas. Nothing really changed, just tightening up some of the language there. And that's on the agenda tonight for our first reading. Our next meeting will be, I was going to date wrong, the first Friday in April, is that the 5th? Fourth, I believe. But we will continue with the wellness policy and look at the athletic mergers once again.
Thank you, Mrs. Collins.
I'd like to report on the Jefferson Committee.
Oh, okay.
So I had the first meeting yesterday and there were two proposals that were considered. And the first one was table to the next meeting. The reason was that we're very unclear where it came from. And it was a proposal to add matches, cigarette lighters, and incendiary devices to level two, category four, which has to do with smoking devices, paraphernalia. And we were told that it came from the policy.
Part of it, part of it came, it was use of vapor, vapor.
Those were delivery devices, like jewels and.
Yeah, I don't think they were matches. I don't think that was part of it.
We updated the code of conduct.
Yeah.
And those changes were sent to the Jefferson Committee to update the Jefferson Code.
Right.
So that they would be in alignment.
Correct.
That's the only change.
Well, I thought that that was, I mean, there weren't changes that were adopted last year.
Yeah, but we updated recently the code of conduct. Two months.
I was going to say the two minutes.
It was.
So that it were aligned. It was about like nicotine delivery devices. There was some sort of.
Because there are new ones currently on the market that were represented in that.
I don't recall anything about matches or lighters, right?
No, it was there. It was just. I thought the changes to the Jefferson Code was supposed to go to the Jefferson Committee first and then approved by the board.
But this was a change that was made on the code of conduct.
I think there's some confusion. I think maybe we should, we should, maybe tomorrow we could reach out to Deirdre Rampart and find out what, I mean, there's kind of some confusion here because this wasn't a change. This was just kind of additional language to add to this, to the smoking because people have kind of been used to smoke. It was kind of the.
I believe that came from Margo or one of our attorneys, who suggested where.
Yeah, so maybe we could reach out to Deirdre tomorrow. Maybe it sounds to me that she has like the wrong page or something.
Yeah, well, I mean, I sent it to her when it all happened and that was a while ago. So maybe I.
It was January 4th.
Yeah.
Yeah, it sounds like there's, it seems to be, it doesn't make sense. That's not what it all, what our discussion was.
No, no. They were supposed to be in alignment with each other. And that was, that was the goal of sending, you know, when we made the change to the code of conduct, I informed Deirdre, you know, we need to, we need to update the code so that it reads the same.
Is that a Mr. Schon? Okay, now we're on to old business. Any old business the trustees would like to bring up at this time? And new business, any? Mr. Reverend Piles?
There's, there's a rumor. I was at a meeting and they talked in terms of that we're cutting the money for the art men, the mentoring program. What's the story on that?
No, that's, that's, this is, and we've, we've been dealing this for most of the year. This is, there's a misunderstanding of it. There's no, no money's been cut from that program. The, and I can, I can bring in, I don't have the paper, but I can bring in the budget and show and have that. Let me communicate that to you. I'll communicate to the whole board. There's no, no money's been, there's, there's a general misunderstanding of that grant by some people. We explained it to them many times, but I, I'll, I'll provide you with that explanation as well.
Can we get it before the coffee and conversation?
Absolutely.
Okay, so that.
Oh, sure. Yeah, I have it. I just, I just can't recite, I don't want, I don't want to see this, but I can't recite it all.
And send it to all of us.
Yes, I will.
Any other new business? Board member announcements? Mr. Schonsey?
I got an email today from, it was from the White House. But a program, a lecture tomorrow evening does, I mean, calls on equity and education. Is that, does anybody know anything about that?
I received the email about that workshop today as well, so I did forward it to our staff, but we did just get it today, so I'm not sure if anyone's attending and it wasn't communicated prior to today. So, but it does sound interesting.
Any other board member announcements? Mrs. Jordan?
Well, I, it's, congratulations to the St. Waltricks team that was initiated a few years ago by Andrew Assas at Bailey and several teachers have been involved. They raised over $4,000. Several teachers were head shaped heads and I just think that they have done a fabulous job bringing attention to a really wonderful charity in the community. So I think they've spread throughout the county as well, so I really want to congratulate everybody involved there.
Anyone else? Mrs. Dragic.
I wanted to congratulate the drama team at JW Bailey. They did some sort of performance. It was really cute. And she had 125 kids who passed through working on that, which is why when it was Sunday, I was happy with 123. Because she delivered and it was good. But it was great challenge. They did a great job as they do every year and it was very fun.
Hard work put into this. And the other announcements? I have a few.
I just have one quick announcement.
Go ahead.
That's okay. Just wanted to announce and congratulate our boys basketball team just hours ago became the section nine best couple ladies. Thank you. I apologize to the board that the games get canceled on Sunday and placed on the same day as our board meeting, but contrary to popular belief, I do not control a lot.
So there's a few things I'd like to bring up. The walk-through Mohar for board members is March 13th on Wednesday at 3:45. And the budget forum will be here at 6 o'clock. And after the budget hearing, a forum, we'll have the board retreat following the budget forum. Then we'll have coffee and conversation on March 11th at the New Progressive Baptist Church. Do we have enough people?
I have, I know that there are three that have signed up, but I don't remember their name.
What child?
It's 6 o'clock.
Thank you.
Any other announcements? Okay, now, Monday, they love it, yeah. It's now time for our second public participation. Anyone that would like to address the board? No one will rush at once. Hearing, no one. I'll make a motion to adjourn. I want a motion to adjourn. All those in favor? Thank you.